If you would, please stand with me.
Mr. Chair, I think it's important for folks to know that the major is a pastor, and if you could share your church, sir, because you shall be singing.
Shall we pray? Our God and our Father will come tonight in the name of Jesus. We thank you, God, for who you are and what you have been in our lives. We know, God, that man don't know how to pray as he ought, for the Scripture says that the Spirit makes intercession for man with groaning that man cannot utter. And so, God, we ask you to utter in this place. You said in your word, "Let everything be done decently and in order." And, God, we know that these leaders that stand before us are unspiritual attacks. We plead the very blood of Jesus upon them, not just them, God, but their family. And I pray, God, that you will cover them from their head down to the soul of their feet. And, God, I pray that you would teach us how to be servants, because we know servant hood is as important as leadership. And so, God, we ask that you would just come in this place with your Holy Spirit. We ask that you look down on the citizens, and I pray, God, that you will just be with them and their family. And I pray, God, that this county will thrive like never before in the name of Jesus. I come against every generational curse. I come against every witch, every warlock. I come against every spell that has been tried to place itself on this place. And I ask you, God, to have your way in the name of Jesus. I know you've got power more than anything else in this world. So, God, you said in your word, "We have not because we ask not." And so, now, I ask in the name of Jesus, I seek your name. And, God, I pray, God, that you will have your way. Hear your servant, if you ain't never heard me before. Have your way in this place, in our lives. We'll be careful, God, to give your name the glory and the praise. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Brother, if you would lead us in the pledge, you can do so where you are, or you can come forward.
You better be. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our March 7th regular business meeting. The first order of business is the adoption, I'm sorry, is the adoption of the agenda. Do any board members have any amendments at this time?
Yes, Madam Clerk, I would like to remove item number five, Recommendation for Award 23-48 Purchase of Lucas CPR Devices With Service Plan for Clayton County Fire Department. There are some legal questions that need to be followed up on. So, therefore, staff is requesting this to be removed from this meeting. That's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous. Any others?
All right. Yes, Mr. Chair. There is an item that I would like for us to take separately, and it's going to be item number three, which is 16-49, and that is for Atlas Technical Consultants.
Madam Clerk, are you clear on that?
Is that item number three on the consent agenda, Madam Vice Chair?
Yes. Recommendation for Fifth Contract Amendment, 16-49.
Also, there's a 10th Contract Amendment for the Enterprise Resource Planning System.
What item number?
And that is item number 16-42.
That's item number two, Recommendation for 10th Contract Amendment. Are you clear, Madam Clerk?
I'm clear, thank you.
And that's it for that, and then I... Oh, I want to hold item 12 on the agenda.
What do you mean?
And that's a motion to hold that item.
That's an at-large appointment.
I'm clear. I would like to hold that item.
Well, I guess if she wants to hold it for it to be at-large, we have to vote on it, correct?
That's right. I think the first two are moved to the regular agenda, and then you'd have to have a motion to hold 12.
Since it's at-large.
But...
So, that's the motion to hold it. Is there a second on the motion?
I second it.
Any questions? I would like to know if she's willing to give an answer as to why the need to hold it.
I believe we have some things on the agenda tonight that will allow us to be able to hold that item as I've requested, and then we can revisit it.
So, you're holding it just for later discussion, or you're holding it from this agenda?
I'm holding it from the agenda. That was my motion.
All right. Any questions? Any other questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, may his three two passes. Any others? All right, with that being said, is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I'm moved. Second, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Anderson, second by Commissioner Franklin. Any questions? Any other items?
No, sir, but can I have a point of privilege real quick, Mr. Chair? I've already given you all a little insight to it, but I have the official information, and I wanted to get this on record for everyone. And I will read it as it follows. And I think districts, all the districts needs to be happy about this. "Greetings, Clayton County Advisory Board. I have some exciting news to share. I am pleased to announce that our 2022-2023 Boys and Girls Club of Metro Atlanta Youth of the Year is none other than our very own Clayton County resident and scholar Elias Dennis. He has been named..." You could clap for that. "He has been named as the Youth of the Year for all of the state of Georgia, from right here in Flint River, y'all." What they say, you build it, they will come. Get this, y'all, he received a $5,000 scholarship from Georgia Power Foundation and represents the Boys and Girls Club of all of the state of Georgia at the Southeast Regionals. So, if y'all could, just keep him in prayer, his mom in prayer, and a huge kudos to our very own Mallory Crowell, who grew up in that area, and we honored her this weekend at our women's event. So, wanted to share that with the crowd.
All right, there's a motion and second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, is unanimous.
Our next item is Proclamation.
Madam Clerk, we're going to take the Veteran of the Month first before we do the proclamation.
My apologies. Our next presentation is Veteran of the Month.
All right, our Veteran of the Month is retired Specialist Four Arthur Prather. Arthur Prather was born August 7th, 1940, in Manchester, Georgia. After graduating high school, he moved to Atlanta, Georgia to work for General Motors. Specialist Four Arthur Prather began his active-duty military career in U.S. Army in January of 1964, stationed in Augsburg, Germany. He spent 18 months as a tank driver. He received an honorable discharge in January of 1966. Mr. Prather worked for General Motors as an inspector and welder. After 26 years, he retired in June of 1991. He later retired a second time from Kroger after six working years. Mr. Prather loves helping people in his community. Years ago, Mr. Prather, his wife, and two other married couples returned to his hometown in Manchester, Georgia. The small group started helping disabled residents, older adults, low-income, and veterans repair their homes all out of their pockets. With that success, they partnered with a very small church in Manchester. One Saturday out of the month, the group was able to do more major repairs, like installing windows, roof repairs, reframing houses, laying floods, I think that should be floors, hanging sheet rock, and whatever was needed interior and exterior to keep people in their homes. Mr. Arthur is a member of Men of Honor in Clayton County. They meet on the second Tuesday of each month and are a group of about 30 men who meet at Old Time Country Buffet to fellowship. This group has started to help disabled men get out of the house to give their wives a break. Now, the M.O.H. share what's going on in their lives and community to help each other to be successful and healthy. M.O.H. has resulted in life-changing events just by coming together to help, share, and give back within their community. When Ms. Prather went to be with the Lord, Mr. Prather requested monetary donations instead of flowers. He used the donations to help more people with needs in his community. Mr. Prather is a member of Griswells Senior Center, where he takes part in many activities and volunteers for several service organizations in the local area. Please help me to honor and to recognize retired Specialist Four Arthur Prather.
Next, we have a proclamation, 2023 March for Meals Month, presented by Senior Services Director Tori Strader-Hanks.
Clayton County Board of Commissioners observes 21st Annual March for Meals Month. Whereas on March 22nd, 1972, President Nixon signed into law a measure that amended the Older Americans Act of 1965 to include a national nutrition program for individuals 60 years and older. And whereas for more than five decades, this landmark law has helped to fund community-based organizations like Meals on Wheels, and it is still the only federal program designed specifically to meet the nutritional and social needs of older adults. And whereas this year Meals on Wheels programs from across the country are joining together for the March for Meals Awareness Campaign to celebrate its success and garner the support needed to ensure these critical programs can continue to address food insecurity and malnutrition, combat social isolation, enable independence, and improve health for years to come. And whereas volunteers for Meals on Wheels programs in Clayton County are the backbone of the program, and they not only deliver nutritious meals to seniors and individuals with disabilities who are at significant risk of hunger and isolation, but also caring concern and attention to their welfare. And whereas Meals on Wheels programs in Clayton County provide nutritious meals to seniors throughout the county that help them maintain their health and independence, thereby helping to prevent unnecessary falls, hospitalizations, and/or premature institutionalization. And whereas the senior population is increasing substantially, an action is needed now to support local Meals on Wheels programs through federal, state, and local funding, volunteering, donations, and raising awareness to ensure these vital services can continue to be delivered for years to come. Now, therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as a month celebrating Meals on Wheels and urge every community member to take this month to honor our senior nutrition programs, the individuals they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. Our recognition of and involvement in the National March for Meals celebration can enrich our entire community and help combat senior hunger and isolation in America. In witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 7th day of March in the year 2023.
Our next item is a presentation, Roman United Update. This is presented by Executive Director of the Development Authority of Clayton County, Mr. Larry Vincent.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me here. I was scheduled to come next week for the work session, and I wish y'all would leave me on that work session agenda. I want to talk about 14,000 Clayton County people we have to go back to work, over $870 million in recovered salaries. Some great stuff going on in Clayton County, but I understand y'all wanted me here tonight and to talk about the Roman United project because of the press we got. So, my colleagues won't be here tonight for Roman United because they're negotiating their contract with a G.C. right now, and they're down in Gulfport. So, and I was scheduled to bring that whole team with me to the work session so y'all can get it directly from the horse's mouth on where they at with the project. They are moving forward with it. They have hired several consultants to come in and help them pull it together. So, what I'll do, I won't delay any. I'll just go right into the project. Wait a minute, that was quick. Hair trigger. When I was putting this together, I was thinking, how do I present this? So, I said, let's start about how we got here a little bit, who was all involved. There's a lot of questions on how did we get to Roman United, a lot of finger pointing, and of course, I said, let's do a brief presentation here on what was the process. Of course, when it got to me, my job was simply to memorialize the project, and that's to do the paperwork on it. But as you can see, it started with a previous executive director. It came B, it came to this board facilitated by an interim executive director. The board saw all three presentations that was vetted and selected. But also understand, at that time, the Office of OED and Development Authority is all under an I.G.A. working as one unit. It was not one or the other, it was one unit. Okay? A little fact that somehow got lost in translation. All right, so when the board selected Roman United, of course, the Development Authority accepted Roman United. And we moved forward. Both mayors of City of Marlboro and Lake City was involved in project discussions. We didn't hide anything from anybody. And as the current executive director, my job was to make sure the paperwork get right, get done right, it get memorialized, and all those documents came back to this board to vote on. All the documents came back here. It was nothing done in secret, nothing done, you know, under the table, anything. We all had to prove it because it's a legal process. And you had some say up there because of the debt on the property. Okay? So, where we at now, we're at item number two with Roman United negotiating this general contractors agreement. And let me just pause there for a minute, because what I want to share with you all, if this doesn't go through, we realize we have to make a decision, and that decision will be made. And we'll go to Plan B. And Plan B will go in another direction, and I'll share that with you guys once we get sign off on it by the two cities, because they got their plans as well. And we'll take it that in that direction. What they have got accomplished is they do have a contractor to do the D.R.I. project, portion of it, that is the development of regional impact. They have signed a contract for the geotechnical services. That's where they go do the drilling, do the soil analysis, the blow count, and things like that to determine foundation sizes and depth and rebar and all that great stuff. Then a new construction schedule will have to be produced and will be updated and redistributed. I have something down here called design sharing, so I want to let y'all know that there were communications back and forth with the county. We didn't all just sit in a silo and say things and do things. We did communicate with one another. What I'm sharing here with you all, we sent out various type of designs, and then we were expecting marked-up drawings to come back. And that's what we didn't get. Now, there were conversations that between all the leaders in the county and the county employees, but not marked-up drawings. The notebooks were done, and they looked something like this. Small, personal notebooks to make sure everyone got the information at the same time, and everyone can sit there and give their opinion. And I think we also presented some, all of it to you all as well, so you can have your input and opinion shared, because that is cheaper than the big 20 pounds of drawings. And we're trying to save money on the project. And we sent these drawings to the county, to both citizens, both mayors, asking for feedback. Mark them up, tell us what you like. And we haven't got any of that, and as you can see my comments here. And that's not to slander anybody or say anything bad by anybody, just the darn facts of life. So, that's all we was asking for, input, because we knew this is important to us. That development, a game changer for Clayton County. We talked about being a Tier One county. The way you get out of a Tier One county is have Tier Three development, especially commercial development. That's brings in your higher-paying jobs. So, it's important to us, it's important to me, and I hope it's important to you all. That's my presentation. That's all I have today. Like I said, I was hoping to bring the big team in next week during the work session. I hope y'all keep me on the agenda. I would love to come back and talk about all the wonderful things we're doing in the county besides this one project.
All right, any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I, thank you. So, I do understand that this was done with board, you're saying that the board...
Yes, before you got here.
Okay, but I do want to say I have pulled, I do have some emails where I pulled back in 2021 where Ed Wall, Edmund Wall, said that we really, excuse me, that we really needed to look at Roman United. You all needed to get a letter of credit and things of that nature. And didn't seem like he was much in favor of the project. So, can you explain to us when he was asking for these documents and, you know, wasn't really, had some concerns about the project and voiced those concerns to?
To whom?
To Ms. Bivens, Ms. Ramona Bivens, as well as our chairman as well.
But we didn't receive that email.
Okay, well, I didn't, I didn't receive that. That's Mr. Wall, he's entirely his opinion. He addressed that to the chairman and CFO, and I don't have an answer for you.
Okay.
Okay, all I know is they were vetted by that combined group that represented both the county and the Development Authority. So, I don't have an answer for you, because I never saw the email. Did y'all get the email? You got it, Ms. Hambrick? And who else got it? Mr. Davis, did you?
Excuse me, Mr. Vincent, that's address it.
Okay, well, no.
One second. We did not get this email until Commissioner Hambrick asked about it. So, I hear what you're saying, going around and asking questions. But let me, let's put that on record. That email was withheld from this board, and it is in documentation that it was not provided to this board until after $559,000 was spent with the group. So, let's make sure that we're all clear on that, as you just stated. And then we'll go back, because it's in your district, so, okay.
Also, I did have Attorney Reed also to try and get the information that we needed on our side. And Attorney Reed, can you explain what we're doing at this point in time as a board and as we deal with?
So, yes, first, good evening, Chairman Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. So, there is a Development Athor, I'm sorry, a Development Agreement that is between the county, the Development Authority, and Roman United. This board, just to be clear, this board's obligation is only for construction of a business incubator, that you earmark splot dollars up to around $4 million for that business incubator. The design of all the big commercial development, that's issue with separate from that. So, within that Development Agreement, there were certain benchmarks that they had to meet in order for the county to remain obligated to provide money, splot money for the business incubator, such as executing a construction contract, obtaining all necessary government approvals and construction permits, and closing a construction loan with an approved lender. And that was to be done prior to the end of December 2022. And when that did not occur, we sent a letter to Roman United on January 4th alerting them that they had not done that, and so that the county's obligation as relates to the business incubator money that was earmarked was no longer an obligation. We have, we have spoken to or sent letter to them about the money that has been spent, but right now, they're still working on putting together this building. And so, we'll continue to monitor how the project moves forward before we look into, you know, how we get any money that may have been spent for the business incubator returned to the county.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Vincent?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin?
It's not so much for Mr. Vincent, but I think that since all parties are here, it needs to be very clear. You stated as you went through, yes, a process was followed. But at the same token, not so much to you, but as board members, we make decisions, particularly I do, based upon information provided to me. And I could state on record, information was withheld. It was not provided to us by the Chief Financial Officer or Mr. Chairman based upon that email that was sent over. There is an email also outlining and looking at the agreement of what was originally agreed upon for the $559,000. So, I think that it is imperative that we understand that decisions would have been different. If you only have pieces of a puzzle, then how can you make up your mind of what we're going to do? And we did make up our mind, but that was absent of that information. And I can tell you, me for one, my vote would have been quite different if I had that info, because at the end of the day, where that may be his opinion, that's who we're using right now within the county. I want to go a little further, though. As now, because... As now, because we've had to dig in deep in knowing that there are things missing. The second thing is when we're looking at a project of this size, and I, and it would be grand to have something as beautiful as this on south of I-20. But when I look at the projects of this size, of that magnitude and that amount of money, money, Avalon's one of them, other places are one of them in Alpharetta, you've got several of them down in other parts of the state, east side and so forth. Those were 800 million dollar projects as well, almost a billion dollars. And there was a feasibility study that was done. There was a cost feasibility study. There was a revenue feasibility study. And based upon my research, it took a second time around. You know, some people may be on, you know, the second time is, is better sometimes. But the bottom line is that project showed no revenues until the second group came in. Yes. And that's with 800 million dollars on that scale north of 20. So when we're talking about doing something to that magnitude down here, it's imperative that we see financials. It's imperative that we see regardless of whether it's just the incubator or if it's the rest of, rest of the project, we need to see this information. And I know that's not all on you.
Let me apologize.
Let her finish.
Okay.
No, you're fine. And then, so we'll stop there because I do want to get to that because that's problematic. I've never seen any of that behind you.
Okay. I don't know what to say.
You don't?
I have nothing to do with the communication flow on this side of the business.
And I'm clear on that.
There is a feasibility study and I think I did email it out. Let me go check my emails. I put my hands on it, I'll send it to you again. Okay? So I really don't know what to say about the lack of communication. All I could do is send it over and come down here and let, and explain and explain and explain. And I'd do that until the cows come home, but that's fine with me.
Who did you give this information, that, that?
That, a copy went to the COO's office that went, I think, to the building people. One went to the ma, each mayor. And I got one. I mean, they're very expensive to duplicate these big, to create these big east side drawings and talking about duplicating it. So we tried to be thrift because it is to people's money. So we wanted to make sure it's done right. And once again, let me apologize. I, I know what to do now. I'll just copy everybody that y'all think need to get it.
Not with all respect, you and I had that conversation several times before.
That's why I'm gonna go back and make sure I did that with the feasibility study and you're dead on the money.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Vincent?
I, I do. As far as the incubator goes, where are we?
You tell me.
Can I finish my question, sir?
Okay.
Within the initial project plan.
You tell me. I understand you are looking at pulling that part out according to what Mr. Reed said. So I, I'm not gonna touch that. Okay, okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you all, have a great afternoon.
All right. Madam Clerk.
The board will now consider the consent agenda.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Is there a second? Now, second to motion, are there any questions on any other items? Here are none, those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
Our next item is item number two, recommendation for 10th Contract Amendment, RFP 16 dash 42. This is presented by our Central Services Director, Carol Rogers.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners. Okay, first item. This is a recommendation for the 10th Contract Amendment. This is for RFP 16 dash 42, which is the Enterprise Resource Planning System for Clayton County. The board originally approved the contract on July the 5th, 2017. The recommendation is to amend the current contract with Kronos Inc. They're located in Lawwell, Massachusetts, and it's to add equipment, hardware and labor support. The total amount is $4,431.35. Funding is available through the 2015 SPOSS Fund. The department's recommendation memo and amendment are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the interim chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly. And also, this is for service at the beach, for the employees at the beach as well.
All right, is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions?
Yes, I wanted to.
Commissioner Franklin.
I wanted to double check that amount. It's 4,000, not 4 million, correct?
No, that's correct. And it's just that we brought it back because we're limited on how much we can do a change order on your contract. So we bought it back because it has exceeded that dollar amount.
And so you answered it, we're just purchasing additional equipment for that area because it was not included in there initially?
Yes, ma'am. And this is for additional services. And I certainly will allow the term, the interim director for chief officer.
That's okay.
You're fine? Okay. Yes, but it's for additional one, you know, as we move forward and additional things are needed, this is just part of that contract.
Any other questions? Those in favor, I. Oppose. It's unanimous.
Next item is item number, number three, RFP 16 dash 49.
Thank you. This recommendation is for the 5th Contract Amendment. This is for RFP 16 dash 49, which is On Call Transportation Project Engineering and Design Services. This is for Clayton County. The BOC originally approved the contract on December the 6th of 2015. The recommendation is to extend the current contract with Atlas Technical Consultants, LLC. They're located in Duluth, Georgia until April the 10th, 2023, while we complete the rebid of the services. Funding is available through the 2,004, 9 and 15 SPOSS funds. The department's recommendation memo and amendment are attached for your review and information. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman his designate to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion, are there any questions?
Yes.
Commissioner Franklin.
This item just came before us. I'm really gonna be honing in on these fourth, fifth and sixth contract amendments because they tend to come back to us in executive session for other matters. So I want to know exactly what are we adding on record for these services? Because this was just before us, not too long ago.
Sure. And what we're doing is we're asking to extend the time while we go through the re, the procurement process. We're actually still in negotiations. We have two vendors. So we just need additional time so that we don't have any lapse of services. So our intent is to complete the negotiations and bring this back to you next, either this board meeting or the first one in April.
Okay, and maybe, and so what is the total amount that it's gonna cost us for the extension of time? Was it only for time measure, not any additional?
It may be additional costs, but it varies depending upon the task order and services that are needed by TND. So we want to make sure that you all have approved that, that we can extend that contract. So the amount may vary just depending upon the services that they may need. But it will probably, you know, what we look at is will it extend the dollar amount that we can do internally? And it will probably, which is 75,000. So we will bring it back to you just to make sure we cover it all bases.
Okay.
Commissioner Hamburg.
Yes, Ms. Rogers. Why are we rebidding this? Why?
Because this is the end of the contract term. So as it's, it's an annual contract, so as it recycles out every three to five years, we have to go through a rebid process.
Any other questions? Those in favor, I.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous.
All right, thank you all.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given two minutes maximum time limit to speak before the board with a total time of 20 minutes for comments. Comments must be limited to matters on the agenda or over matters which the governing body has jurisdiction. Speakers must maintain decorous demeanor and refrain from personal attacks upon board members, shouting and using obscene language. Please state your name and county of residency. For the record, speak clearly into the microphone. And speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Tekeah Thomas.
Good evening, Commissioners and Chairman, Vice, Vice Commissioner. I just wanted to announce to everyone that tomorrow evening, the Office of Digital Equity will host a broadband listening session with the Georgia Technology Authority. With unprecedented broadband funding that's coming to our state to address the digital divide, it's crucial that community members and business owners and stakeholders in our region have a chance to share their perspectives. So all county leaders are invited as well as the public. Registration is limited to 100 guests and most of you have registered to attend, so thank you for that. And we just want the community to know that they're welcome to come and let their voices be heard as well. It is a free event. Registration is limited to 100. So if you're gonna come, you gotta register right away because it is tomorrow. And I will have informational flyers in the back for anyone that's interested in attending. And thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for the work you're doing. You've been working hard out there on this. And I don't think people really realize that this digital divide, we didn't realize that there are actually some digital deserts within our county. So we really need the community to come out and let the voice be heard. Thank you for your work.
Anthony Williams. Come take the podium, Mr. Williams.
Protocol has been announced. So mine's very simple.
State your name for us.
Anthony Williams, District Number One, of course. So really, all I only have is perhaps three outlined items. One was from the gentleman that stood up here from Roman. That was unacceptable for me. The excuses monuments of nothingness. And that's what that was. So I'm hoping that you guys stick to your plan. Thank you, Ms. Franklin, for holding him to the guns, to the fire, because that's what I'm expecting out of my board members. It's for you guys to operate as though you work for me, of course you do. Not only me, but every citizen in here. The second one was, I was going around to a lot of my senior citizens center and they were complaining about the, the funds that was allocated for housing assistance. I think it was like 9 million. I think that was the case. 4 million came back. Where's the other, what, what did they do with paying these rental assistance? I see a hundred people that say that they never got their money for the rental assistance. Please look into that for me. All right? And let's have an answer, some resolution. And one final one that I want to ask you about. Please be discretionary when you go out and you find people to come and work for my county. Because we need the best of the best. We don't need repeat performers who were not equipped to do the job initially. And to bring them back to do something and to get paid for, again, unacceptable. Don't hire people that's already shown you that it was inept in their performance. We have a lot of young talent in Clayton County that wants to come here. Because I want to get us back to four, not to one, Jeff, like you promised me 12 years ago, but to four. Because that's what drove me to Clayton County, was that we were a top tier county. And there's no reason why we can't and shouldn't be top tier today.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Josh Lofton. Josh Lofton. Gwen Gooden.
Gwen Gooden, Clayton County, Commissioners, Chairman Turner. At the beginning of public comments, Madam Clerk reads the rules of conduct on how a speaker is to address this board. Members of this board also have rules to abide by, which are listed in Article 2, Section 2 dash 37, Board of Communit, Board of Commissioners Code of Conduct. Unfortunately, some members constantly disobey them. Case in point, 237 dash 06C, work with other board members in a spirit of harmony and cooperation in spite of differences of opinion that may arise during the discussion and resolution of issues at board meetings. 237 07B, support the employment persons best qualified to service employees of this county. 237 dash 097, most important, communicate in a respectful, professional manner with and about fellow board members. Perhaps if they follow these rules, which they all agree to, we can start having more productive board meetings, thereby helping to improve this county's image. Why is the interim sheriff hiring family members with no law enforcement experience at ridiculously high salaries? Enough of the nepotism. Our next sheriff should be both qualified and a man of integrity. Thank you.
Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, Clayton County, Madam Clerk, Commissioners, Chairman Turner. I asked about this at the special call meeting Thursday. What was the reason for the emergency agenda item request at the February 21st meeting? Commissioner Franklin said, because it's an emergency. That's not a reason. Then she said, it's time sensitive. That's an excuse. Commissioner Hamburg said about the House Resolution 167, the state reps haven't done anything yet. It's just a proposal. So why was it time sensitive? Commissioner Franklin said, the Ellenwood Senior Senator was renamed Sonia Singleton Gregory. So if you're a commissioner, you get your name on a building, but not if you were the first black chief of police of Clayton County and now the chairman of the Board of Commissioners. At the sheriff's candidate forum Saturday, February 25th, they said the former sheriff, Victor Hill, refused audits, oversight and accountability. He appointed his godson as interim sheriff, who then put his name on sheriff's cars and billboards at our expense. They also said that the interim sheriff, Levon Allen, hired his mother, the salary 93,000. Commissioner Franklin, why isn't that nepotism? Okay. That's my answer.
Thank you.
Miki Garber.
Madam Clerk, Miki Garber, Unincorporated Rex, Georgia. Topic of my discussion tonight is a report and update on the election of the next sheriff of Clayton County. Interim Sheriff Levon Allen has not shown up to any candidate sheriff's forums, nor did he respond to the Clayton Crescent survey questions, but he wants to be the next sheriff. I have been to three of the forums to question the prospective candidates by the citizens of Clayton County. Mr. Cox, Mr. Evans, Mr. Fabian, Mr. Story have all been present. Interim Sheriff Levon Allen has been consistently absent. What does this tell the citizens of Clayton County? For Levon Allen to be a sheriff for all of us? Interim Sheriff Levon Allen has not shown up to any candidate sheriff's forums, nor did he respond to the Clayton Crescent survey questions, but he wants to be the next sheriff for all of us. Do you think he is standing true? Thank you.
D.C. Craddock.
Good evening to all the Commissioners. I'll be brief tonight.
State your name, of course.
My name is Donald D.C. Craddock, Ellenwood, Georgia, District One. I'll be brief tonight. I was in another county, and they were bragging on all the things that they have going on in their county. The relationships they've mended throughout the state with all State Department heads. And that county was a rural county not even twenty years ago. And I was there on Saturday night, and I was thinking, why they were bragging on their county. What are we doing to mend relationships with the state that we can get the DOT to give us some of the exciting things that's going on in our neighboring counties? We don't have those relationships because we're busy infighting and playing politics. We, the citizens of Clayton County, demand that each of you get outraged like us and give us the results that others are getting that are our neighbors. We deserve better than what we've been getting. We got all the resources that we need in order to be a Tier Four county. We just got to have the will to, and we got to have leadership that feel that we deserve to be a Tier Four, Tier Five county. So I employ, you know, each and every one of you to search yourself. If you don't have it in you to do it, I can't make it be in you to do it. But we will get leadership that get us what we need and hear the people that elected them to sit in these positions. Thank y'all. Have a good night.
Carol Yancy.
Carol Yancy, Rex, Georgia. PSA, the January thirtieth Nitsel where interim sheriff distributed lies about me and Chairman Turner is being addressed by me in another form. Our tax dollars and no cents, S-E-N-S-E. The sheriff's office has sixty-two to sixty-five outstanding civil service cases, lawsuits, blocked and delayed for the past six or seven years by Victor Hill. Cases estimate at to be one million dollar apiece. That's sixty-five million dollars. Times six years. That's three hundred and ninety million dollars of the five hundred million dollar estimate going around about lawsuits for a county that is self-insured with a Tier One status and a twenty-twenty-two budget of two hundred and thirty-two million. Also, the interim sheriff, who has been reckless and fiscally irresponsible with more lawsuits on the way, he's asked for this Board six million dollars in emergency budget amendments over the past six years. He has a negative forty-five thousand dollar balance in the interest-bearing forfeiture account. He's placed his name on all vehicles, nepotism, cronyism, death, and serious injuries in jail, running and hiding from inmates, citizens, and the medical examiner. Same applies for some Commissioners who are running and hiding from process service and being, and not being held accountable for their unethical conduct, colluding with federally indicted, no, they're not indicted. Now, they're convicted. Based on the January tenth work session audit discussion, there may be at least one more Commissioner that soon be facing the wall. End imbalance, negative foolishness, nonsense, and bankrupt.
Point of order.
Leaving the citizens with a question, what in the convict hill are the ultra-viruses and boy-borne the doing? The citizens are not cash cows.
Your time is up.
Thank you.
Calvin Copeland.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Commissioner Calvin Copeland from the City of Mauro. I'll just have one question. I guess the last board meeting, you guys didn't vote on the name change of all the Confederate's, uh, strict sign, we have on here. I don't see how, how many black people on, on a board cannot change a Confederate sign. That is beyond belief. Beyond belief. How can that be? In a county, up well a sudden percent of black people, and you can't change a Confederate sign to a generic sign that you, you guys put up there? You can't do that? What's wrong with you? This is twenty-twenty-three. The Civil War is not over. It stopped fighting, killing black folks a hundred fifty-some years ago. Killing white people a hundred fifty-some years ago, it's still killing black people. Not only the Civil War is still going on, the laws cause is still going on. Now, the governor right south of us in Florida want to ban black history as we know it. That's not gonna stay in Florida. It's gonna spread across the country. There've been a war on black history since nineteen sixty-eight when it started. And you guys sitting in metro Atlanta, the mecca of black folks, not only the United States but the whole world. It's the next Harlem Ren- Harlem Renaissance have right in Atlanta. But you guys can't change, you can't change a Confederate name off a sign and put a state name, a generic name on it. We didn't ask you to put Malcolm X or whomever. You can't put Georgia Tech or University of Georgia. It's beyond belief. How can that be in twenty-twenty-three? It's just mind-blowing. It, this issue is not going anywhere. Elections have consequences. And I can almost guarantee you, this is one of those. If not at the next, it may even be prior to that. But this is something that is really at the soul of what's going on in this country with the black community.
Your time is up, sir.
Not only here, but nationwide.
Thank you. Timothy Von Dale Jefferson.
Sir, and it will be coming back.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. I, I'm gonna focus on my own community, District Three, Timothy Von Dale Jefferson. I reside there. I get a bunch of phone calls because I, of some people's view I'm a leader in the community. But I went to visit a site, it's called Lakeview Commons. And it's a townhome development. And I was kind of shocked when I visited that site. They have a six-foot privacy fence approximately two hundred, two hundred feet long, and it's constructed backwards. It is not appealing. I don't know Nova Community Development. I don't know who's approving these permitting. But there are people living there, so I assume some have got the COs. And then the other shocking thing was, including the sidewalk, I think the driveway was approximately eight foot. And I thought that we had changed that mandate. So I don't know how this development got approved. Secondly, we're in the middle of spring cleaning. I, I think I've been fighting this issue for two years. I've been on code enforcement. I've been, I mean, I didn't call the Chief of Police. I've been fighting the trucks in Lovejoy. I mean, I've been fighting. Because Lovejoy and certain parts of the Southern Crescent is turning into a truck stop. From Bobby Kotright, the mayor of Lovejoy, I've fought hard to try to clean this up. And there's a gas station on the corner of Tyra Road and Tyra Boulevard. It's a big gaping hole in the retention park. It's been there for a year. There's a cemetery on the right-hand side behind CBS Pharmacy that wrought out a fence that's been down for a year. We have eyesores up and down Tyra Boulevard in District Three. But yet, I have contacted everybody.
Your time is up.
And what's most important, the gas station on one thirty-eight-
Your time is up, sir.
That G I R A is using at the dumping site, something needs to be done with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment. Is there a need for executive session?
Yes, on litigation and real estate.
Plus personnel.
And personnel.
All right. Is there a motion to go into executive session for a personnel litigation and real estate?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Everybody have a good evening. All right. Motion to reconvene.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Uh, second to motion, those in favor, aye.
Aye, Mr. Chair.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Mr. Reed.
I have a purchase and sale agreement for the purchase of sixty-six seventy Merchant's Way in Mauro, Georgia, for the amount of two-point-eight million dollars. And request that the Board would approve that.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Hamburg. Any questions?
No, just make sure we do what we talked about on the other end.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Ms. Ambles.
Good evening again, Board of Commissioners, and good evening to our Clayton County citizens. Human Resources has only one request. We are requesting a step increase for interim Deputy Chief Information Officer Matthew, Matthew Hutchison. We are requesting Matthew's salary be increased from thirty-six, grade thirty-six, step eight, which is a hundred and four, six, thirty-one, to grade thirty-six, step nineteen, which is a hundred and nineteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars. And that would be a cost to the county for the rest of the budget year of one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion made by Commissioner Franklin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Anderson. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous.